Good afternoon. This special call meeting of the Pender County Board of Education is now called to order. To determine that we have a quorum, we are going to have a roll call vote. Please answer when I call your name. Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Spivey?
Here.
Ms. Hanson?
Here.
And Mr. Reeves?
Here.
Thank you. It is determined that we do have a quorum. Board members, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Tom Reeves, yes.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. We have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Ms. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
And Mr. Hall?
No, due to no public comment.
Okay. The motion carries. We do have, we have approved the agenda. Okay, our action item today is number 3.1, three-tiered bell schedule. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Breelove.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Board members, thank you for being here. Just kind of quickly getting us back up to speed on where we left off last time we presented the three-tiered bell system. Once again, this has been put in place as a recommendation over the last several years, working specifically on the east side schools, Highway 17. A lot of concerns with our school, safety concerns created with multiple school campuses, current demand on our student transportation program. We are recommending a transition to a three-tiered bell system for that side of our school system. The Topsail feeder pattern, Topsail High School feeder pattern schools. Keeping in mind that this recommendation has not been something that has just come to light all of a sudden. This has been a recommendation for quite a while with the Department of Transportation, with our transportation department on how best to serve our students and school system as a whole. Protecting instructional time with a number of buses that are typically late or running double or triple routes. Addressing bus driver shortage. A three-tiered staggered start does require fewer drivers, thus putting less of a demand on our transportation system, knowing that finding bus drivers is a difficult task. Reduce, like I said, reducing the number of double routes, reducing congestion on our roads at any given time, especially around the start and stop time of our current two-tiered system when elementary and middle school begin and end their days at the Surf City campus and on the Topsail campus. And then other things that may happen as well is offering more hours to our bus drivers because they will now be running three, most of your drivers will be running three different routes and thus getting more hours. For some of these bus drivers, it will now push them over into full-time jobs and that now comes with benefits in the retirement system and health benefits as well. So with that in mind, I will turn it over very quickly to Mr. Taylor to get us back up to speed on the start and stop times of what this request is.
Good afternoon, members of the board. As Dr. Breelove said, we've been exploring this change to optimize our school operations and improve safety and efficiency across our district. This proposal not only aims to enhance campus safety by managing the number of personally owned vehicles during drop-off and pickup times, but does address critical transportation issues such as late bus arrivals and driver shortages, which we believe do disrupt some of our valuable instructional time. This proposal will allow us to transition to a bell schedule with many benefits, such as improving safety on our campuses, reducing the impact of excessive traffic in our communities, and help reduce the impact on our limited resources. However, we know there are going to be challenges and we recognize the valid concerns that have been raised regarding this implementation. We want to assure you and our community that we are dedicated to addressing these concerns and ensuring that the changes we make support the well-being of all students and families in our community. At this time, next, will you please, thank you, these are the proposed bell times for the 25-26 school year. This does include the entire school district. However, as Dr. Breelove stated, you know, the most critical area for this proposal and its enhancement would be along the eastern corridor of Highway 17, including the Topsail High feeder pattern. At this time, are there any questions that I might be able to address?
Please, go ahead. These proposed times, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I was just going to thank Mr. Taylor for the presentation, but go right ahead.
Okay. These are the proposed times by school for the entire county, but at this time, we're just looking at the east side of the county. Is that correct?
If that is the recommendation of the board, yes, ma'am.
So if that's the recommendation of the board, that none of the schools on the west side of the county would change their start times, it would only be the Topsail feeder pattern, correct? So is there, I mean, so this is... But this, what's presented right here is for the entire county, is...
Yes, ma'am. This was the presentation copied over from our last meeting.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Hi, this is Beth Burns. All I was going to say is if something happens here today that we do pass something, could we put a graphic up?
Yes, ma'am.
Showing only impacted schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Just in case. Okay, board, does anybody have any more questions on this? Anything from any emails, any questions from any emails or anything that has come in, anything that you think we might not have covered already?
Can I, I just, this is Jennifer Hanson. Can I say a few words?
Please.
Thank you. I want to start by saying thank you to those of you who have sent emails in opposition and in favor of the staggered bell system. I want you to know that I read each and every email, each and every one, and I know the board members, other board members, I'm not going to speak for them, but I know they read them as well. And I applaud you for getting involved and exercising your rights to do so. And to those of you who have cited works in journals, including Pediatrics, Volume 149, published in '22, and the Journal of School Health, Volume 86, published, I'm sorry, Number 5, published in 2006. I want to assure you, I've read those articles. And some of them, and I will quote from the Journal of School Health. "This study is not without limitations, many of which relate to insufficient data collection or reporting to conduct well-powered analysis." And it is my understanding that the Board of Education has been trying to come to some agreement on a staggered bell system now for over two years. This is a challenging situation, as there are many parts to this problem and solution. With redistricting looming, with a new K-8 school opening kicking the can down the road, in my opinion, this is mine, is just really not a solution. Let's talk about the challenges, okay? Ms. Burns, do you mind if I keep going? Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Thank you so much. Okay. Buses. We will be required to have a staggered bell schedule to get a driveway permit for the new K-8 school. That is not news to anybody. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. How many double routes for buses are on the east, on the buses on the east side do we currently have?
I don't know the specific number. I mean, we have 25 across the entire district.
Okay.
Close to 19, I believe, on the east side.
19 specifically on the east side alone.
Okay, so we have 19 on the Topsail feeder school system?
Yes, ma'am.
Alone, okay.
Feeder pattern.
How will the staggered bell schedule change that number of double routes?
Based on the analytics that were created and utilized by Edgelog, we believe that we're going to reduce the east side transportation by 12 buses. Just saying if you remove 12 buses from the road, you know that you're going to significantly reduce the number of doubles. We have not compared that specific metric, though. But removing 12 buses from the entire eastern corridor will allow us to remove a significant number of doubles.
Okay.
I would assume we would more than cut them in half, but again, we would not know until we're able to run the current year bus request.
Okay, I understand. And what is the current impediment to hiring bus drivers and getting them licensed and on the road?
Well, there are several hurdles that we cross. Obviously, we do have a dual employment policy, which does prevent us from hiring some people who simply want to be stationed in the school as instructional assistants. Those that do desire to become bus drivers spend a significant amount of time going through classes and then we share trainers, NC DOT trainers, with New Hanover County and Brunswick County, which puts us always vying for any open spots for the on-the-road training that's required and then, of course, the assessments thereafter.
It's kind of come to our attention maybe that that is a hurdle that is just where it kind of, getting bus drivers licensed seems to be NC DOT. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We have been able to overcome some that I would yield to Mr. Overton, but based on my review of some of the board documents in the past couple of months, we've had several new drivers be approved, et cetera. A lot of that goes into, I think, the work that's been done regarding increasing driver wages and a commitment to improving student safety on the buses. So we've made, I think, some significant steps in the right direction to improve recruiting, but we do still have a hurdle of the certification process.
And talking about career status drivers, can you explain that, what we're hoping to do with this three-tiered bell, three-tier schedule, how that would help?
Yes, ma'am.
That situation?
Currently running two tiers, our bus drivers usually get less than three hours of work per morning and afternoon shift, which means they're a less than 30-hour employee. Expanding the transportation program for three different stops allows us to increase those routes to over three hours, which means if a person drives in the morning and in the afternoon, they can achieve career status by being over 30 hours of work per week.
And we're hopeful that will be a recruitment tool, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And we believe that it will because we do lose some of our staff who've become fully trained and experienced to New Hanover, for example. Those that live close to the Castle Hain area choose to go drive because they can get more hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, this is Beth Burns. If someone started our bus driver training today, they signed up to be a bus, let's put that back. If they signed up to be a bus driver today, how long would it take them, on the average, to get their bus driver's license so we could put them to work?
In order to give you a very accurate answer, I'd like to yield to Mr. Overton for that answer, please.
Yes, sir.
The short answer on that is honestly, we're looking at a minimum probably three to four months to get them through. We work, our process is to get them started in the class.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Realistically, I think you're a three to four month window, sometimes even longer, depending on what DOT schedule is. Our goal is to get them here, get them hired, get them in the first class that we can get them in, get their permits, get their physicals, you know, any additional training we can do here, and then get to the point where we're waiting to be on a DMV schedule. And at that point in time, it's just dealing with a log or a backlog of two trainers supporting three counties. So it's a bit of a lengthy process still.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
I have a couple of other things I want to talk about. These are all concerns that I've had from, and I'm sure all of you have too, that I was just trying to get addressed based on the emails that I received. Before and after school, I know there are a lot of concerns about before and after school care, especially for those younger ones who will be there. Can someone, Dr. Breelove, or someone could explain what our plan would be for that?
Sure. Yes, if we adopted a three-tiered system, looking at especially that sibling policy of ensuring that we have some sort of morning program, just like we have after-school programs, to watch that sibling if the parent is in need of dropping that child off at another school. So let's take Surf City as an example. If under the proposed, the elementary school is, starts before the middle school by 45 minutes, we would propose that having the ability to drop both children off at the same time and allow that middle school student to be with an adult at Topsail Middle School. What that looks like specifically is going to depend on the school and the resources that are available. Is that going to be free or is there going to be a nominal fee? Could be either or, just depends on how we work that out. But this is something that other school systems do across the board. If there is a fee, it would be, it would be a nominal fee to help that parent out.
Thank you. I did have another quick question about Cape Fear Community College, and because I've had some parents ask about the schedules and how that could impact their student in the fall if high school goes first. So I know there's going to be some adjustments, I think is the correct word. What, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that's the right word. Until, you know, until we know what changes are going to be made, having those conversations with Cape Fear Community College. All the conversations that I've had with Cape Fear Community College, with members of our cabinet staff have, is they are very flexible with us. We will always work to try and do what is best for students. Certainly, if there is a particular class and time that meets, we will try and make that happen and if it can't, well, what alternatives are there for that student in order to work this out? Obviously, the longer that we do it, the more smoother it becomes. Right now, we are obviously June and, you know, working those out. But I've been assured that we will work this out for students who are taking Cape Fear Community College classes.
Okay, thank you.
So you can guarantee that nobody at the early college or one of the high schools is going to miss anything?
I can't guarantee that, no, but we will do our very best to ensure that students are taken care of to the best of our ability with them.
All right.
Ms. Hanson, do you have anything else?
Yeah, well, that was the last of my concerns, but I just, I just wanted to make a statement. I just want to say with everything that's been said, I just, I just don't feel like we can look in the rearview mirror anymore. That we need to look to the future of what can be done and what success looks like for each and every student in our district.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Hey, do any other board members have any comments?
Yeah, I have a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
A few things to say. This is Tom Reeves. First off, I've heard a lot of, don't do it on emails, don't do it, but have not heard any viable solutions to this problem. And it's like Ms. Hanson said, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. That is not a solution to this problem. We've got to do something. All of us, we have all spent countless hours with teachers, parents. I've been in the streets, I've been in the hardware store asking, you know, parents, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? In meetings with staff, transportation, you know, I can't even, you know, I can't even count the hours we've spent on doing this. So this wasn't a decision, just a fly-by-night decision. But I do believe this schedule is the best we can do. It's not perfect, but I do believe it's the best we can do. And also, as Ms. Hanson said, DOT is requiring us to have a three-tiered schedule to give us that driveway permit for that new K-8 school. And I just don't see how we can't, we've got to do something. So what makes sense to me is starting the high school first, just like Dr. Breelove and the transportation and Mr. Taylor there said, throw in a wide net over Hampstead and getting all those kids or students in school before the traffic hits in Hampstead. And that's usually in Hampstead, because I live there, 7:10 to 8:30 is a nightmare. But if those students are in that school and then the other buses can concentrate on the other areas, they will not be all over Hampstead, they'll just be in the north Topsail area, south Topsail area, and Topsail Middle School picking up kids and getting them into their schools. So it only makes sense. It will help, and also, as I said, it will reduce 12 bus drivers that we will need alone. Another question I had got answered was as for the elementary and the middle school siblings, yes, they can be dropped off at the same time. You don't have to make two trips, and I'm talking mainly about Surf City Elementary and Middle. But then you do have Topsail Annadale and Topsail Middle together, just drop them off at the same time. You don't have to make two trips. High school students involved in after-school sports and activities who have to travel will not, will miss zero class time, zero, instead of missing part of their fourth period class. That's huge. So again, it's not a perfect schedule, but we've got to do something. I believe in this. I've anguished over it, I've lost sleep over it. All of us, five of us have talked about it, and we've got to do something. So that's, that's all I've got to say. This decision was not taken as, you know, like a fly-by-night. We worked hard for this.
Ms. Burns?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hanson. Mr. Reeves, when you said, you said something that I had written down that I had forgotten to add. Logistic, the emails that came through this morning were, let's, why can't we swap middle school and high school times? Or start times? Can you explain to them why that's logistically really not a great solution?
Logistically, the districts that utilize a tiered or staggered bell schedule utilize the wider net like Mr. Reeves referenced. We specifically need more than 45 minutes to run a high school route. It's usually around 50 minutes to an hour to get those high school kids. Our smaller attendance zones, such as breaking up Surf City Middle to the north and Topsail Middle to the south and to the west, allows us to then concentrate on the two smaller areas in a shorter amount of time. And then, of course, elementary school would be the same. It helps us confine those areas to the smaller attendance zones. Additionally, from an academic perspective, if we were to start the high schools at 8:40, that would be 10 minutes past where they currently start, therefore impacting their fourth period class and additional 10 minutes of lost instructional time for those students who are involved in extracurricular activities, which requires them to leave campus prior to what they currently leave at 3:30. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I have one more comment. This is nothing new. If you go on the website, Charlotte Mecklenburg, which I don't even, I didn't even count the If you go on the website, Charlotte Mecklenburg, which I don't even, I didn't even count the high schools, probably 20 or 30, they're all on 7:15.
Yes, sir.
Onslow, our neighbor, right down the, the road, the county line, 7:10. So this is not nothing new. I'm sure there's a whole bunch of Raleigh, same thing, 7:15, 7:10 or 7:15. So this is not something just new, and it just makes sense, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments that any, any of the board members would like to make?
I'm good.
Okay. Are we to a point of making a motion? Are we to the point of making a motion for any particular schedule?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bell schedule for the east side only, not the west side. The west side stays the same, for now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Reeves has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Jennifer Hanson, a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, thank you. At this time, whenever I call your name, please answer with your vote. Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Spivey? Mr. Hall?
No.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion carries.
No.
Oh, Mr. Spivey? Okay. Okay. Then we have a tie and the motion still carries. Okay. Thank you, board. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. We have a motion. Do we have a second for adjournment?
I second. Jennifer Hanson.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. At this time, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hall?
No.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Spivey? Okay. I'll break the, well, at this point, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.